Good evening, everyone. I'm going to invite my school board colleagues to join me here so that we can begin this evening's meeting. It's wonderful to see a full house tonight. The regular business meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors of February 26, 2020 is called to order. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Mr. Abarka?
Present.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Thank you. It would now be in order to receive a motion to approve the agenda.
Go move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on the agenda? Hearing none, the secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda is approved. This evening, the first item on the agenda is a public comment. We have six individuals who have indicated they wish to address the board this evening. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. So the chair will now recognize Mr. Steve Burton of the District Advisory Committee. Welcome, Mr. Burton.
Thank you. I would just first wanted to extend a special thanks to the superintendent of the Board of Education for the last board meeting where you, a member of the community, Mr. Love, was recognized for his continuous efforts to try and improve the reading skills of all the students in the school districts, especially those in the early grades. I hope that other such outreach opportunities will be sought by the board and administration with other like-minded community members, parents, educators, and students who desire to see all academic fields improve as well as athletics and activities that allow students to gain the real-life experiences they need. We all recognize the financial difficulties that the district faces as it tries to incrementally improve all aspects of educational experience. However, as I've stated before, as I came to speak to you, there's not an enormous financial obligation if the district seeks out volunteers in the surrounding community. As an example of this, such volunteerism, when Southeast High School was open, the local faith-based community formed a coalition of about seven churches. That coalition provided no cost to the district or the high school, such things as a winter holiday band that played during lunchtime, multiple staff meals during in-service days. They provided pre-game meals for the entire football team and cheerleaders, and periodically post-game pizza or hamburgers. They donated prom clothing to the students and manned the prom store. We greeted the entire student body with fruit and supplies on the first day at school. One time, we even had the KC Wolf show up for the kids. We met regularly with the principal and other staff to plan upcoming events. We attended sporting events. We bought sports equipment for the school. We bought sports clothes for the school students. We donated funds to pay for robotics kits so that they could start a robotics club. We assisted staff during parent-teacher conference days. We served as classroom tutors and assistants to teachers. And one summer, over 100 volunteers from the community came and did painting and maintenance repairs on the school facilities. The district's mentoring program is a great example of one such community involvement project that does definitely benefit the students in the district. The DAC has made several program recommendations and will continue to suggest various ways to provide initiatives that will positively affect all the students, parents, and the teachers. The DAC, along with community members like Mr. Love and others, are here to make education and athletics transformative for the student body, and we wait your call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. The next speaker on our list is Demonte Rochester, also with the District Advisory Committee. Welcome, Mr. Rochester.
Thank you. The DAC is partnering with the Parents, Teachers, and Student DAC for Advocacy Day in Jeff City on April 8th. We are now in the process of asking local parents to join us on this Advocacy Day on April 8th. The DAC has also agreed to sign a postcard. So when you guys go to Jeff City, we'll have parent support on bills that's coming up in Jeff City. And then next, our general meeting will be on April 29th, and we're trying to work on our agenda for that particular meeting. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. The next individual for public comment is Deisha Mosey. Ms. Mosey? The next individual listed is Napa Terry Hill. Welcome, Mr. Hill.
Actually, I'm Rashid Janade.
Oh.
So I'm Rashid Janade. I'm with the Kansas City Missouri Health Department. Nephew Terry Hill is the one that actually set this up for me, Ms. Manser. And so we want to talk about the relationship that the Kansas City Missouri Health Department Aim for Peace has had with the district for the last 10 years, and supporting the district teaching life skills classes, and also conflict mediation, and also conducting mediation in many of the schools. When principals call us, we go to the different scenes. If they say that, hey, we think there's going to be a problem after school, they don't just call the police, they call Aim for Peace to kind of help with some of those situations, to try to talk to the families and the people that are off-campus of those particular schools. So we've been doing this work for 10 years. So as we go into our next 10 years of this relationship, we want to make sure that we have a stronger relationship and we have a memorandum of understanding to support that relationship. This work hasn't been cheap. We've been doing it for free for 10 years. If you do something for 10 years, it costs you, right? But, you know, the rewards of it has definitely been great. We've had a lot of conflict mediations that we've helped to solve in the community. We look at the schools as the front line, and we look at the school district as a sister to the health department. We're public health, you're education. Also, welcome to Truce. We're glad you're here, right here in the community, doing the work, and we want to continue this relationship in the next decade to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next individual is Mr. Tom Love. Welcome, Mr. Love.
Well, I'd like to talk about reading. I know that's a big surprise.
What?
Four out of 10 children were at first-grade level at the end of third grade, going into fourth grade. It's a serious problem. I think it needs to be the top priority of this school district. Six out of 10 in St. Louis, serious. They didn't have any readings, they don't have any reading specialists in St. Louis, none in their elementary schools. There were zero here when I started, went to four, now we're at 14 in the elementary schools. But what are we supposed to have? What's available? What kind of money, resources do we have? Well, it's over $600 per student. So if you multiply the number of students in K through 2nd, you'll find that they have a couple of million dollars. Of federal funds that should be targeted for reading, and that's not happening. It's getting spent other ways. If you look at the Brookings Institution report in 2015, you'll find that there's only really one effective way to spend Title I funds that they found, and that's tutoring, tutoring the students who need it. Now, in Aletha, when they did that, they're able to get 60% to 80% of the students on grade level. They have the same demographics as Kansas City, with about 90% of the students at risk free and reduced lunch, and 30% speak a foreign language at home. And they have a reading specialist and para in every elementary school. They pull out eight students per hour, half an hour with a reading specialist, half an hour with a para, and then switch. And they do that for six hours. So each literacy lab is helping 48 students. Now, if we have 23 schools, that's 1,100 students in K through 2nd that gets tutored every day, and we target the students at the bottom. 20% of the students need help every day for three years. Those are the students with like dyslexia. Another 20% need it maybe a third of that time. So maybe they just need one year's worth of help. And that's how you fix it. It's really simple. The other law, and we're not complying with the current law, the rules and regulations of Missouri say we're out of compliance. I filed a Title I complaint some time ago about that, and I was supposed to, under the law, get a response and an agreement with the district. Our goes to the state. I don't want to take it to the state. I'd like to get it fixed. With the help of the board and the board's oversight, I think that can take place. We're also automatically promoting, we're putting four-year-olds into kindergarten or five-year-olds into first grade, which is illegal if you automatically promote them. They're supposed to complete kindergarten, not attend, just attend, but complete, and they're automatically being pushed through. That's the second law we're breaking. I'd like oversight on that from the board, and I'd also like oversight on the literacy law that took place in 2001. St. Louis, like us, had nothing but zeros on their money that was allocated for that tutoring that's required under the state law. So we need oversight. Appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love. That concludes our public comment for this evening. For the presentation of this evening's revenue expenditure report, the chair recognizes Board Treasurer, Mania Abarka.
Thank you. All right, so it looks like we've got a treasurer's report coming up on the slide so that we can all follow along, maybe? Getting there?
Kyle, could you page it, please? Sorry, I don't have a clicker. Kyle, can you page this slide, please? Thank you.
Perfect. All right, so what we're looking at here is a comparison to our budget amendment in terms of where we're at in terms of January year-to-date actuals. And so this is the entire summary of revenues, expenditures, and fund balance overall. Wanting to draw comparison here to the amendment process so that we can come in line as the new revenues that we've received from the local county taxing jurisdiction are modifying our original budget proposal. And so it looks like there is a minor change that Linda has asked me to correct, that CNS should be total versus CNS. So that is one error there that we'll have to change. Moving to the next slide, this one gives you a broader understanding of, getting there eventually, a broader understanding as to our overall revenues and how we're receiving them based upon the taxing jurisdiction we're receiving them from? Maybe not? Maybe this should be the pie chart, right? Nope? Okay. So this is actually revenue, so I'm going to skip around a little bit. Looks like my slides and those slides are out of order. So we are on revenues, right, Linda?
Yes.
All right, so line one here is the current property taxes. We're at $94 million, or 93.7 in terms of actual collection here. It puts us at 95% of the total budget for the year. In a few slides, there's a better breakdown as to actually where we're at in terms of the revenue that we receive from the property taxes, which is a big question for a lot of us in terms of where we're at in the budget projection line. So that's an important element there. Delinquent taxes, only at 46% year-to-date as of the end of January. As a reminder, so that you have some preference here, the percentage collected on the far right should somewhat align between 55%, which is the percentage of the school year we have completed thus far, or 58% of the fiscal year. So as you're looking to that percentage on the far right, you can somewhat moderately assume that you should be within that range unless, like the current tax rate or the current taxes that we receive, we get big lump sums. So you'll see kind of front-loaded on some of these items, similar with expenditures. So marginally assume that between 55 and 58 basically is where the percentage should be on most of these lines. So we're at 56% year-to-date for the delinquent taxes there. Bottom line, total revenues at this point, we have collected 81% of the local revenue budget. Local revenue is 80% of our total budget, which is the pie chart. I'm guessing that should be two slides probably from here. So this is extremely important for us to continuously monitor and track as the revenues come in because as we can anticipate, specifically property tax revenue, there'll be some modifications based upon that process as the county legislature moves through it. So that's that. Now pie chart? Getting there? All right. So this is expended, I'm looking at it. So there we go. The previous slide just showed a further breakdown of our federal, state, and local, federal, state, and county tax receipts that we get, and nothing really has dramatically changed here. So you'll see the broader pie chart, and again, that 81% of the local revenue that's coming and that 214 million is still a very large chunk. So the fact that we should track that is very important to us as we continue to budget. So this is like a guessing game. It's wonderful. So salary and benefits, again, is the important element of our expenditures as overall, I need to be flipping my slides as well. Overall, it's 68% of the total budget. As you look at the salaries and both fringe benefits, so these are, one of our largest assets, obviously, is our teachers and our staff, and so making sure that those percentages are in line with where we're projected to be at with that 55% to 58% range, and we're doing fairly well there. Year-to-date, we have expended roughly 47% of the SMB budget. This may seem low, but it is due to the fact that the salaries earned by teachers for this fiscal year do not pay out until August. So since they received their nine-month school year pay over 12 months, there's some adjustments again. So this is why you're not seeing the alignment with the 55% to 58% on the right-hand side. So moving on to the next slide here where we start to discuss purchased services. 22% of the total budget are purchased services. We have spent 36% of that total. One line that you'll see, I think, as the second portion of this, is within the student transportation, which is our largest line, excuse me, within purchased services. As we have switched vendors, the department is adjusting the process for billing, and so bills have come in. We just necessarily haven't paid them out as appropriate yet. We will adjust that by next month, and so it should be in accordance with the actual expenditure there for student transportation. So the supply side, this is an area that, again, we continue to monitor, and I think Linda and her team is still working on some of this, right? So some of these supplies should be at the, similar to the technology, so this is slide 10, by the way. Maybe there on this one, maybe not. So slide 12 on this one. So you'll see like textbooks, library books, music supplies, art supplies, some of these should be at the similar rate as the supplies for technology-related line item, simply because these are expenditures that should have occurred around the beginning of school. And so we're adjusting to try and understand why we're at some of these lower ends here. Similarly, with the incentives, the student employing community incentives, to making sure that we're aligned in accordance with where we're at with that 55% to 58% again. So, but again, supplies is a very small portion of our budget, roughly 5% of the total budget here, and we've expended 55% of that, so we're somewhat on track there. So I believe the investment report is next. This is just our expenditures, again, broken out in the broader pie chart as to where the dollars are going that we've actually expensed, and again, you'll see the salary and benefits as a large chunk of that. All right, so our investments. So as I will remind you again, that we have these investments to backfill the revenues that we otherwise receive in a big lump sum and to pay for that gap in between. So we have $115 million in total investments plus our cash balances. The significant increase from last month is due to the fact that the majority of property tax revenues are collected in January, so that big chunk is here. And as we work through our expenses, we're going to spend through that money, and these treasury notes or these investments are going to backfill the dollars that we would otherwise not have to remain, to fill the gap of the remainder of the year. So our average yield is roughly 1.6% due to the fact that all of our investments are short-term to support monthly payrolls. So our property tax collection report. So in this slide, I believe this is as of today, our year-to-date collection for property tax has hit 99% of the budget, indicating we were on track for the originally budgeted current property tax rate. But again, you'll see some of these fluctuations here that I will let Linda expand on a little bit here.
On this slide?
Yep.
So we are right on track to budget. Earlier, we were concerned we were trailing very much behind. January was a large collection month, tracking right to budget. We're about $1.5 million from budget, and we're starting to see these weekly collections really slow down. In fact, last week, one of the categories was negative because of some adjustment and some appeal, so we owed them back a little bit. So it appears that we will be on target for budget here. You'll see that note at the bottom. This does not include delinquent taxes, and we'll look at it in our budget amendment in a few minutes, but we are actually trailing behind on delinquent tax collections as compared to budget. But still probably on target for budget, whereas earlier in the year, you'll remember there was concern and conversation around the fact that we could bring in significantly more. It does not appear that that will happen at all, and that's a result of the appropriate BOE process that is happening at Jackson County. But the board does not need to be concerned at this point that we will not have adequate revenues to support the current budget.
So no windfall, Linda?
Correct.
Okay. So the next part, again, Linda's going to expand on a little bit more. This is going to walk us through our budgeting process as we prepare for that here coming up.
And I apologize, I see I did not get the date. I don't know what year we're budgeting for, apparently. So as we prepare for the 2021 budget versus the current budget, we wanted to share with you, as we do this time of the year, what are the instruments and tools that we use that guide us and direct this process. So there are Board of Education policies. You'll see those there on the left, specifically our equity policy, the fiduciary responsibility policy, and financial planning and budgeting policy. So those guide our work very significantly. Additionally, the administrative policies, which you may also here refer to as MSBA policies, Policy DB on the annual budget, talks specifically about the responsibility of budgeting and documenting and using this as a living document to drive the majority of the work in the system. So those we'll be checking in on as we go through the process these next few months. This is a timeline that tells you what happens from this point on. We're very early in the stage. We're about four lines down at the end of February there, four or five lines down, so a significant amount of work has happened. We've taken our first stab at estimating next year's revenues so that we know if and what resources are available for increases in compensation for teachers and staff and those kinds of things. We'll be bringing you updates on pieces and parts of this as we go through that. We want to take another draft at that because there are a lot of assumptions and projections that have to be made before we share those. And then I know that Dr. Shepherd and our budget department have been working this week with principals and buildings on their budgets, and every budget manager in the system who has a budget has received their worksheet and their rules and directions on how to complete that, how to use the ZBB, the Zero-Based Budget Process, to make sure that we know exactly what they're asking for. So those are rolling back in, and we should be in pretty good shape to stay on target. Important to note that when we get down there to April to June, that's where the board begins to really get busy with the budget season. In April, we'll hold a public hearing, as required by statute, related to the budget process and planning. Then we'll hold a budget workshop with you guys. It's a little more in-depth look at some of the details, and then come back to, hopefully, a final budget document to present to you at that May 25th business meeting. We're saving a June 24th date in the event that when you receive that May 25th document, you have changes or adjustments that you want us to make before the budget is finally approved. And just kind of the key elements of how we use the budget process to make sure that we're supporting instruction, the key number-one reason that we're here. Again, focusing and continuing to use the tier model that the instructional team built a couple of years ago that helped us determine class size, staffing allocations, and where we need to allocate resources. And we're all working together, human resources, business and finance, and instruction, to make sure this happens. We will be prioritizing needs of school and curriculum over operations and administration, again, to keep those dollars focused on learning and working to create and continue to expand the tool that helps us measure the effectiveness of those investments and how we see, you could call it ROI, in those additions that have been made the last couple of years by the Board of Education. Questions? Ms. Cortez?
It's going to be her.
Just a couple of questions. On slide three, where you are showing current local tax revenue, does that include taxes that are currently, that were paid under protest, or are those still being held by the collector's office?
I could have guessed your question, couldn't I? It does not include anything held under protest because in Jackson County, 100% of a tax receipt is held. So it's only, it only includes those if that's actually been worked out, which they are trying to work on those as they go. I had a conversation just last week with the assessor's office, and they are resolving those at a fairly good pace, so there's probably some that were originally paid under protest, but if that's not been resolved, it's still fully held at Jackson County. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Quinnly, do we, I totally lost my train of thought, old age. Do we expect to make up, I'm assuming, the 5% through the rest of the year? So where are we in comparison to last year, for example, with the remaining 5% on the current local taxes?
So I think this slide that does, this last slide that we've added this year for you, helps us with that a little bit, and you're talking about the local revenue piece?
Correct.
Yeah, so at the end of January, we're at 95%. As of today, we're at 99%. So we do get a month, a weekly remittance from Jackson County based on collections. So it looks like, you know, we only need that 1.5 million. Again, that's just on the current taxes to get to budget. So I feel really confident that we're probably going to hit that 1.5 million. You will see we're actually reducing revenues when we get to the budget amendment in the delinquent tax area because they are trailing behind trend and behind budget. So it's maybe is a bit of a wash as to where we'll end up, but I think total property taxes, we're going to end up very close to the actual budgeted amount.
And do you know what the current backlog is at the county?
I do not. We had in January, you'll recall from some of the reports that we've been sharing, we were really behind. Like we were, it was really worrisome in December and early January because we were trailing so far behind last year in collections, and then we had some really significant pushes where they, I think, processed a ton of things that had maybe been in hold. I don't know the current backlog. I have asked them for an update on where that AV is as compared to certified because we know it's coming down every week as that BOE process does what it's supposed to do. We do, as a part of the preliminary budget work, by the end of next week, we're at the end of February, right? By the end of next week, we should have our preliminary assessment for next year's budget, which probably is going to tell us where this year's AV has fallen to, and then we'll have a pretty good idea.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Linda, can you give us, and this associates with the taxing rates, is there any other additional information, whether it's legislation that's coming through or changes from the BOE, about the taxing process, right? Because that's a significant impact to us, and I'm sure that things have moved a little further than the last conversation we've had.
Yeah, both of those are important areas to be watching right now, both legislation and then not only the work of the BOE, but then legal and potential litigation.
Just for our audience, BOE is what?
Oh, I'm sorry, Board of Equalization. Sorry, thank you, Dr. Radel. Some of you might have thought I was talking about the Board of Education. Yeah, Board of Equalization, thank you. So there's work happening at the Board of Equalization that is bringing down the assessed valuation and then thus the expected revenues. That process is going to continue to happen for months because there were such a significant number this year. Additionally, we do have probably a higher number paid under protest this year, but we're unable to access that information. So to Ms. Cortez's question, we really won't know until that's done either. There is at least one lawsuit pending against Jackson County that could impact us, and so Mr. Thornton and his team are paying attention to that, and we'll probably provide you updates as it progresses. It's very early, and we have no idea what the results of that will be at this point. And then there are multiple bills in Jefferson City that could potentially cause some caps and some adjustments that we're very closely watching. In particular, House Joint Resolution 77, which targets only Kansas City public schools, has has extreme, I believe, probably unintended potential complexity questions and issues. And we're watching that one in particular very closely. 1968.
Thank you. Would you just, for the purposes of the public, just succinctly explain what a zero-based budgeting process means?
Sure. So, this will be our, I believe, third year that we're having zero-based budgeting. And it was one of the things that Dr. Bedell wanted to do as a new leadership came in. And it's a little more work for every single budget manager, but it gives us much more insight into exactly how we would be spending each budget. So, I'll just use some made-up numbers and examples. So, if I am the facilities and maintenance crew, I might have a line that has a half a million dollars in it for service contracts that might include a boiler contract, an HVAC maintenance contract, some of those kinds of things. In the past, that budget line would say, repair and maintenance, $500,000. Well, now, that budget line has to say, current budget, $500,000, requested budget, $518,000. And I have to have a supporting document that adds up to that $518,000. I need to know which contract, for what purpose, and how much it will be. So that we don't risk things just rolling because they've always been there or something, not planning for something that we should have and not having the money in the right place. And so, that process happens at every district-wide department and at all of our signature schools who get additional resources.
Thank you. The only other comment I have is really a comment, which is I very much appreciate the budget timeline that you provided. I think that's really helpful and just a great reminder to the public that we talk about our budget throughout the remainder of this spring in public. There is a public hearing, and that is an opportunity for the public to weigh in and make comments and talk about the things that are their priorities. So, thank you for putting this in writing. I appreciate that. Are there any other additional questions? All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda are reports of ad hoc committees. Are there any ad hoc committees that are going to report? Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Communications and Community Engagement Committee would like to publicly introduce a change in procedures that would allow the public to sign up on the day of the Business Meeting to speak during public comment period. This option will be in addition to the existing procedure in which the public can call the Board Secretary in advance to reserve a spot on the agenda. It's the recommendation of the Communications and Community Engagement Committee that we adopt this change as it removes a barrier to participating in the meetings. This makes it just a little easier for the public to provide feedback. So, it is our recommendation as a committee that we adopt this change. Therefore, I move that the Board vote to adopt the revised procedures for public comment as drafted in the handout that is in your packet and has also been made available to the public.
Second?
Is there any debate on this motion? Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, no, no debate per se. I just wanted to thank the CCE Committee, as well as the leadership of DAC and the parents involved in that because the more you guys provide this sort of feedback, the more we can make sure that you're included in the process and the conversation. And so, thanks for the work around this, and I'm supportive of it for sure.
All right. Hearing no other comments, the Secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manczer?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. And again, thanks to the committee, Dr. Jones, that's Mr. Abarka, and Ms. Cortez for participating in this and bringing forward this proposal. And we think this will increase the opportunity for public participation. So, thank you. Are there any additional reports from ad hoc committees this evening? All right, thank you. The next items of business are the Superintendent's Report. The Chair recognizes Superintendent Dr. Mark Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. During our monthly Business Meetings, we like to provide a video highlight. And this month, our video highlight will focus on Black History Month. Black History Month, I'm sorry. So, let's run the video. We live in a country where opportunity has been and continues to be distributed unevenly on the basis of race, gender, and national origin. Black History Month heightens our awareness of those cultural histories and legacies that are often projected as belonging to the others. And so, as we entered into this Black History Month for 2020, Kansas City Public Schools wanted to be intentional about sharing those stories, sharing those contributions by African-Americans throughout Kansas City and beyond. We launched several initiatives. One was our social media Black History Month campaign. Each day throughout Black History Month, Kansas City Public Schools posted information about individuals who have either come through the Kansas City Public Schools organization or have impacted the Kansas City landscape altogether. Also, we are in the midst of a Sankofa Black History Month oratory contest. The oratory contest is really deeply rooted in the African-American experience. Many of the orators that we think of, from Sojourner Truth, or Frederick Douglass, or Martin Luther King, that comes from a deep tradition where many years ago, actually for a couple of centuries, where African-Americans were not allowed to read or write. And so, it became very important that storytelling and the way you told that story was the way that individuals could remember their history and then be able to pass that on to another. And then, lastly, we sponsored the Black History Month Lunch and Learn. We had several leaders. All right, gentlemen, we will move on. This will be posted to our website for any viewers that want to see the conclusion of it. And I know oftentimes, we do run into technical difficulties. We're not immune from that here in the Kansas City Public School District either. So, we will get this up and post it. Let's move on with the agenda. We want to go ahead and conduct a presentation for the Legacy Grant for Student Health in the amount of $34,997.80. And that is presented by Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation. We want to thank you for this generous donation. Please come up, and we'll give the podium to you for a few remarks.
It's the fun part of the meeting, right?
Right.
So, first, I'd like to acknowledge Lauren Grimes and all the hard work that she put into the proposal to our foundation for this grant. This is the third year in a row that Kansas City Public Schools has been a beneficiary of our Legacy Grants for Student Health program. But first, too, I want to provide just a little bit of history about our foundation. And I want to acknowledge Shannon Kazinsky, one of our board members, and a board member who actually sits on our Health Education Committee as well. And that's the committee that makes the decisions about these grants. Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation, for those of you who've been in this community for 20 years or more, you might remember Baptist Medical Center and Trinity Lutheran Hospital. We actually are, we have the foundation funds from those two institutions because those two hospitals both sold to a for-profit. So, we have their assets, and we promote access to health care in our community in a number of different ways, including nursing scholarships, various other grant-making initiatives that we undertake. We offer a medical conference to doctors. We have a program called Kansas City's Medicine Cabinet that helps people access health care, including vision care, prescriptions, dental care, and hearing aids and other durable medical equipment. That's our biggest program. And this Legacy Grants for Student Health program started in 2017 when our Health Education Committee made the rounds to a bunch of different school districts and talked to them about what their needs are and where the gaps are in the funding that's available to public schools. We recognize that most districts don't have access to private grants, so we're thrilled to offer these funds. Each year, the funds are available to districts who are invited to apply. And you can purchase asthma treatment supplies, which is one of the things that Lauren included in your proposal, health screening equipment such as stethoscopes, audiometers, pulse oximeters, those sorts of things, which also Lauren had in your proposal. And then, finally, training for mental health. In particular, we're very concerned, as all of you are, about kids and bullying, suicidal tendencies, et cetera. And we wanted to invest some money into the community to work toward not really solving these things, but addressing them in the school districts. And so far, since 2017, we have invested over a half a million dollars into 11 different school districts. And then, this year, we added two charter schools as well. So, it's a great privilege for Shannon and I to be here today, and I want to thank you for your time and thank you for your partnership. We really appreciate it.
All right. Our next item is our attendance poster contest winner presentation. And Major Brooks will come up. Major Brooks is serving as our dropout prevention coordinator, liaison, leader. He's also handling our attendance and making sure that we are developing and implementing solid systems to ensure that our school district is moving on both of those continuums. And this year, we've made an intentional focus or efforts around trying to promote the importance of students attending school on a daily basis. And so, I want to go ahead and pass it over to you, Major Brooks, for this next portion.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Good evening. One of the things we'd like to do today is congratulate students that won first prize in the District Attendance Matters Poster Contest. Considering the number of quality entries that was received, each of these students and parents should be very proud of their achievement. What we'd like to do is thank each student for participating in the effort to help promote student awareness and the importance of attendance. For their achievement, we will be awarding tonight a Certificate of Achievement. We have three frames. One will go for the individual student, one will go to the district, and one will go to that school. As well as, they will be presented with a Kindle tablet tonight, as well as their class will also receive a pizza party. So, at this time, we ask Dr. Bedell to come forward to make the presentation.
Hello, I'm Rosa Linda Aviles. I'm a dropout specialist. So, I'm going to announce the winners. The first winner is 1st Grade Border Star, Skylah Dickerson. The next school we want to recognize is Hail Cook, 2nd Grader Lily Crushy. Faxon Elementary 3rd Grader Leo Alonso Solis. Longfellow Elementary 5th Grader Darren Brown. Last but not least, from Phillips Elementary School 6th Grader Brianna Perez.
And in closing, I'd like to thank Dr. Bedell, the Board, for your continued support. We will and will achieve our attendance goals this year, and we look forward to moving forward with our process. Thank you.
Thank you, Major Brooks. Keep up the good work. At this time, I want to, let me just find my notes now, for our next presentation. So, Avery Harris. This is a big deal. This is a Lincoln College student, College Preparatory Academy student. He was selected to represent the Missouri Commissioner of Education on her 2019 holiday card that went around its entire state, including 517 other school districts. Avery's artwork was chosen as the front cover of the Commissioner's Holiday Card and was sent to friends, colleagues, and education representatives across the state. So, we wanted to publicly congratulate you on your artistic talents to showcase KCPS on the statewide stage. So, if you could come up, I want to give you this award. Is, oh, we're going to have principal come up, and we'll give you this award. But, this showcases the kind of talent. We have a lot of talent, and you saw that with a number of our elementary students that are up and coming, that we know will have a very bright future in this system. All right. At this time, we generally will provide the community with an update on the strategic plan. We generally will do an update during the fall semester, and then, we will give a mid-year update. So, we will bring Jesse Lanes up to provide this update to the community, to give you all an update on how we are progressing towards the goals that are articulated in our strategic plan.
So, I'm excited to give you the mid-year strategic plan update. The purpose of this update is really threefold. We want to keep the Board of Directors informed. It also serves as a proactive communication and public accountability mechanism with the public to show them that we're actually doing what we say. We're also supporting the whole child, making continuous growth toward mastery of all subjects, developing 21st century critical thinkers and problem solvers, and then, of course, making sure that they're ready for life after KCPS. So those are our five goals. The rest of our plan is really organizing the work of adults. So we have our four pillars of how we're organizing adult work, and then around those four pillars, we have strategic priorities that align to each one. There's 12 different strategic priorities, and within each priority, there's several different key actions. So tonight, we're going to be reporting on some of those key actions related to our areas of focus. So we have four areas of focus for this school year, which we presented the last time we were before you. They are career and technical education, early learning, technology, and special education. So we're going to follow the same format that is in the report document, but this is the very highlight version. So if you'd like more information, you can reference that report. But we'll start with CTE. That aligns nicely to key action 2.5 about expanding electives and strengthening the quality of our existing courses. So we've had some really nice work take place in CTE this year. We've added four courses to manual, which you can see there. We've also started the National Technical Honor Society within KCPS. So it's the first year we've had that. We had 26 inductees in the fall, so we're looking forward to seeing that society continue to grow. And then we also have our student there in the corner giving the hug. That is Nathan Tobin. He passed a rigorous assessment and became the first high school student in the United States to earn a wastewater management credential. So that is something definitely to be celebrated and a wonderful achievement for him. In the report, we also list our issues and challenges, as well as our lessons learned. One of those being, you know, regarding CTE, without that foundation, there is no innovation. So there's been a lot of work envisioning going to our CTE programs. And then our priorities for the next reporting cycle, really looking at that middle school careers experience and what's offered there, implementing pathways, and then the goal to increase enrollment at manual for next school year. So planning on ways that we can do that. Our next area there is early learning. That aligns to key action 6.1. Again, there's been a lot of progress made in this key action as well, one of those being the partnership that we started with the Leading Men Fellows. So that is an initiative for young men of color in their gap year to give them exposure to the teaching profession. And so began that partnership to get, increase that demographic within our system, as well as we joined the pre-K cooperative here in Kansas City for future expansion of pre-K seats at community partner host sites. So that's something that happened in the fall. And then the Head Start team created the Trauma Smart Team to help provide support to our students. Other things with early learning, we know that we have issues and challenges related to that because KCPS is gradually increasing those state ADA reimbursements, as well as in Kansas City and nationwide, we have a shortage of early childhood certified teachers. So something that everybody is having to deal with. Some of those priorities for the next reporting cycle, creation of the Early Learning Parent Task Force, and finalize those host sites for the pre-K cooperative. Technology is our third area. There's a couple different key actions that really align to technology. I just wanted to highlight a couple. 2.1 is that alignment. So we've had that key action for a while. We started with the alignment of curriculum a couple years ago, and this is really focused on aligning that technology. And then 12.2, which is strengthen the use of technology across the district. So we've had some really neat work that's been done in this area as well. One program that's been implemented is NEPRIS, which is connecting real-world professionals to classrooms via technology. So it's pretty cool how they do that. It's really twofold. You know, it's exposing children to maybe careers that they might not have a lot of experience with, but it's also connecting the lessons that they're learning in class to real-world application. So one example of this that we're talking with the team, we had a group of third graders who were studying about area and perimeter. And so they then had this session with professionals in architecture and engineering to then talk to them about how they use those things in their jobs. So it was an opportunity to see that real-world application again, which is what we want for our kids for sure. Other technology things, the nuts and bolts of technology, talking about upgrading our infrastructure within the district. We know that's important. We think about that 15 years doesn't seem very long, but I'm sure in technology, that's a lifetime. So important to make sure that is up to date. Some of our issues and challenges as well, you know, battling those outdated perceptions of what the IT department actually is and what they can do for your district. And then we have several priorities there listed for our next reporting cycle as well that they're going to be taking on here in second semester. And then our last area that we'll report out on is special education. That aligns to key action 3.1. This is another key action that we've actually selected a couple years ago, and it's one that's really loaded because a lot of those have a lot in those key actions. So that's where it calls out specific groups like gifted and talented, our ELL students. And so we've reported in the past on those groups, but we really want to look at that intervention services for sped students. So we've had several major accomplishments in that area, and we have a little bit more information that I'll give you on this in just a second, but that implementation of the K2 inclusion pilot at three of our schools, which has had some really great success and results as well. Also, working to improve the quality of the IEPs for our students. And then we developed this year, we opened up this fall, an early childhood special education autism classroom for the first time. So some of the issues we've had with that, with the K2 inclusion, you know, parents are, might be reluctant to split up siblings, you know, to send them to one of those three sites. But as we'll see, it's a wonderful program, and a lot of parents are enjoying that. And then a priority for the second semester, developing the year-two plan for what that inclusion looks like. So before I give you some details about that, I believe there's a short video to watch.
My name is Dr. Chiquita Laurie. I'm the Assistant Director of Special Education for the Kansas City Public School District. I am also the administrator for the K2 Inclusion Pilot that we have started this school year. Our K2 Inclusion Pilot takes place at James Elementary, Melcher, and King Elementary. Through the K2 Inclusion Pilot, students with special education services are able to get their needs and their services met within the general education classroom.
In previous times, he's always been pulled out of class for a lot of the additional services he gets, and that takes him away from one of the big pieces that he needed, which was social skills, being able to interact with other kids his age and things of that nature. So he's definitely become more verbal, and his echoalia has actually pretty much stopped entirely, and he talks a whole lot more and is a whole lot friendlier.
Notice that he's a lot better in speaking. I've noticed he has better contact with people, likes to use the little clever app. He likes to do reading eggs. He gets really excited. You almost forget that you're doing homework. He just thinks that he's playing for 15 minutes of reading, 15 minutes of math, and it's super easy.
What this means is students are able to be served inside of the classroom instead of being pulled out to receive their special education services. We are able to provide this inclusive environment through co-teaching, where we have a certified general education teacher and a certified special education teacher, both in the classroom, providing effective co-teaching modeling through alternative teaching, parallel teaching, station teaching, and team teaching.
So our students have an opportunity to be able to have that small group, as well as the intervention for the sped students to be able to be included in all of the activities as well. We've seen a lot of growth from our students this year, which has made it very rewarding to be able to have both of us working together in the program.
Not only are we seeing tremendous growth academically for our students in the special education program, we're also seeing tremendous growth socially and emotionally, too. So they're just really being fully integrated, included. We have students who have speech and language services, as well as occupational services, and they also get their services inside the classroom. So everything is fully included. They're not pulled out for any services, and we are just seeing just tremendous growth all over.
Thus far, our district data is showing that students are growing at a substantial rate, and we believe that is due to effective co-teaching. We have reduced the teacher-to-student ratio, where students are able to get their needs met immediately, and they're able to demonstrate their understanding.
I'm grateful. I'm very thankful for the program. It's a new program. I was a bit, I wasn't sure at first, moving him to a school that was well outside of his zone, but it's actually turned out to be amazing.
I think that was pretty close to the end of the video. So it was only a few minutes long, but a nice video, really highlighting that program there for our K2 Inclusion. There's more details about special education on page 13 of your actual progress report document. So I will highlight just one of those since we were talking about the K2 Inclusion Pilot. So in those three schools that we had the pilot at this year, the general ed students receiving sped services had an average growth of 78% in reading and 121% in math. And that actually is higher growth than gen ed students not receiving sped services at those schools. So it's really nice to see that growth with that inclusion pilot. So just some of those next steps for the strategic plan. We'll be implementing some of those priorities that you can read about in the report, as well as we'll be sharing this report with all of our stakeholders that helped us to create it in the first place. So trying to keep those folks engaged with KCPS and showing them what we're doing. We'll continue to update the scorecard, and this will also inform Blueprint 2030 and future plan updates.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. And just, I'm going to kick it off if my colleagues will let me. This document is now currently available on our website. Is that the case? All right. And then the scorecard, families can also find this scorecard, and this is reflective of the updates that we've, of data received so far, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And this is also available on the website?
Yes.
All right. Wonderful. Any questions for my colleagues on this report? Okay. All right. Thank you. It's fantastic. I will say, one of the things I've appreciated from the beginning, when Dr. Bedell kick-started the strategic planning process, is that unlike a lot of organizations where strategic plans are, the planning process happens, and then the plan is nicely published, and it goes on a shelf. I've watched through this superintendent's time where this plan has been implemented and has been publicly discussed and shared and progressed. So I am very grateful for that, and I think we can honestly say to our community that the investments we're making and the actions that you see and the changes are really a reflection of our strategic plan priorities. So thank you, Dr. Bedell.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jesse, for your continuous work in this area. And we're currently, this is year three of implementation, so we're beginning to move to that phase where we need to look at the next iteration of our strategic plan to keep it relevant with some of the changes that have also occurred here, not only at the state level, but some of the significant changes since we've written that strategic plan that have occurred at the federal level. So we'll be in the process of starting to look at a timeline to get on that, but thank you. At this time, I want to bring Nicole Collier White up. Nicole, do you have a video in your presentation? Okay. All right. Thank you. So our Ed Foundation was another one of the big initiatives that we undertook, and it was originally the Catalyst Foundation. And there are several board members in here that I'm certain Nicole will introduce to you all. But I had asked Nicole to take over the Education Foundation, rebrand it, and let's really try to figure out how we can go out and leverage community resources to feed directly into our schools. And I mean, we are extremely pleased at what has happened over the last two years with our foundation. We feel that we owe it to our community to provide you all with a thorough update on what's happening with our Education Foundation.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. It's really exciting to be before you. I think it's been about a year since the foundation has provided an update to you. So tonight, we just wanted to share with you what 2019 looked like for us, but then also give you a little snapshot into what the revenues have looked like over the past couple of years for the foundation. And really quickly, to introduce our board, I wanted to bring up our new board chair for the year. This is Michaela Stevenson. She works for Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we're going to be under her leadership for this next year, and she's actually going to do some quick board introductions as well.
Yes. Thank you so much. I'm so pleased to be here. As Nicole said, Michaela Stevenson, newly elected board chair for the KCPS Education Foundation. We're really excited about the direction of our board currently. For a while, we, as Dr. Bedell said, we kind of changed things up, came from the Catalyst Foundation into KCPS Education Foundation. We worked on bylaws. We worked on a lot of the things that are tedious but necessary. And now we're really in a massive growth pattern, and we're really excited. Nicole will share a lot of that. We've added five new board members this year, which is incredibly exciting. We do have a couple of our board members with us this evening. If you can wave or stand or do a dance, if you'd like. Phil and Mia, thank you for joining us. Yes, a dance. But we're now at a total of 11 board members, some really fantastic community advocates and advocates for KCPS. So we're very excited to get moving and to get working, and have already done a lot of work this year and continue to do so. So just to really quickly run through our mission, to secure supplemental funds and resources to enhance the student learning in the Kansas City Public School District. And really what that means for us is that in accordance with the strategic direction of the district, we really want to focus on our educational initiatives and our impact programs in order to supplement district funds, but then also make sure that we are as supportive as we can be to what the district focus areas are, and making sure that we are supporting the students in every way that we can. So I am going to let Nicole, our incredible director for the foundation, take it away and share our exciting stuff.
Thank you. So I think the exciting part is the growth and the impact that the foundation has been able to make in such a short period of time. So if you look at 2019, our revenues for the year were over $700,000, which is really exciting. Almost 75% of that was restricted, which means it came in, it directly went to a specific program within the district. If you look in the middle column, that kind of shows you how much money actually went toward programs and grants within Kansas City Public Schools, and that's over $613,000. So we were able to provide a breakdown for you. Most of that funding, almost half, went to Avid. $24,000 went to support Summer Fest. We had over $142,000 in pass-through grants. So we had some outside foundations that provided funding to different programs within the district. We had $57,000 in capacity building, which was just for the foundation. So that helped us do financial planning, that helped us do marketing, visioning, strategic planning. And then with just our annual fund, which was our first-ever breakfast, we raised over $75,000. On the right column, you're going to see our 2019 expenses kind of broken up a little bit more. One thing we really wanted to show the board is that 90% of the funds that come through the foundation go back to KCPS. So we're not squandering the money that comes in. We're not using it for various things that no one knows. We're very transparent. Most of it goes to programming. Most of it goes to...
So I think the exciting part is the growth and the impact that the foundation has been able to make in such a short period of time. So if you look at 2019, our revenues for the year were over $700,000, which is really exciting. Almost 75% of that was restricted, which means it came in, it directly went to a specific program within the district. If you look in the middle column, that kind of shows you how much money actually went toward programs and grants within Kansas City Public Schools, and that's over $613,000. So we were able to provide a breakdown for you. Most of that funding, almost half, went to Avid. $24,000 went to support Summer Fest. We had over $142,000 in pass-through grants, so we had some outside foundations that provided funding to different programs within the district. We had $57,000 in capacity building, which was just for the foundation, so that helped us do financial planning, that helped us do marketing, visioning, strategic planning. And then with just our annual fund, which was our first-ever breakfast, we raised over $75,000. On the right column, you're going to see our 2019 expenses kind of broken up a little bit more. One thing we really wanted to show the board is that 90% of the funds that come through the foundation go back to KCPS. So we're not squandering the money that comes in, we're not using it for various things that no one knows, we're very transparent. Most of it goes to programming, most of it goes to teachers and to support classroom development, and we're very proud to say that to you and to all of the donors that give directly to the foundation. So this is just looking at the past four years since we reconstituted the foundation, a look at revenues. You'll see in 2016, when I took over, they raised about $13,000 that year. In 2017, we were building some steam, and we generated over $62,000. 2018, hitting that $696,000 mark, and then last year, over $702,000. So we're excited by these numbers. We think this means not only that people are interested in us, but that they're interested in the district. They want to support the kids and the teachers of this district, and we're excited to be the vessel that they utilize to support those programs. On the right-hand side, you will see that the district does support its own. In 2017, we did start the payroll deduction program, so we have over 120 individuals that are actually signed up. Monthly, they give to the foundation through their paycheck. Our revenue is over $18,000. We have 80% of principals right now that are signed up for that, and 100% of our cabinet members, which means not only do they work here, but they reinvest in their district, which is exciting to tell donors as well. So we wanted to give you kind of a breakdown of programs. So we have three pillars in the foundation: motivated students, caring adults, and an engaged community. Those are our three stakeholders. We represent all three, and we find ways to mold all of those together to make change and impact. So if you look at the motivated students pillar, we have two main things that are kind of flowing through at this point. The first are reading interventionists. So over $150,000 have been plugged into that right now. The full grant is going to be for $450,000. Most of that money is going towards training for our math and reading interventionists. Over, we partnered with Dr. Shepherd, and she helped us find a lot of the interventions that received over 12 hours of literacy training. We had 102 of our K-2 teachers certified, so really partnering with them to make sure that reading was a strong focus of the foundation. Next is going to be Avid. We've received over $317,000 to support that program. Over the course of four years, we'll hit about $600,000. Avid is in 13 of our schools, we have over 300 students enrolled, and I hope someday soon that you guys ask Dr. Wilson to come up here and provide you a report on the data from Avid, because it's crazy. It's crazy. He was showing me some of the stuff today, looking at students that are enrolled in Avid that aren't, and the gains that they're making is remarkable. So we're excited to help pilot that program in the district. Looking at caring adults, as you know, every year we do two rounds of instructional grants. So in 2019, we provided over 20 grants to teachers and provided about $24,000 in total. Teachers can apply for about $250, ranging to $2,000. So we were excited to do that last year. We also fund Teacher of the Year. So as you know, the winner receives $5,000. The two runners-up receive $1,000, and then we do give a financial contribution to the principal of the year of $1,000. Our last pillar is the engaged community, and we received a lot of momentum in this pillar last year. So as you know, it was our biggest Summer Fest to date. We had over 7,000 people roll through that yard over there, which many of us felt it, lovely staff that day. We packed over 7,000 backpacks with community partners. We partnered with Truman Medical Center, gave over 350 pounds of food and groceries out to families, which is amazing, and over 100 free sports physicals were provided to students. We had three amazing partnerships last year. So the first was a partnership announcement with the Cordish Industries. So every year, they're going to give about $50,000. We're going to partner with them on a concert series deal, where they give us proceeds from those ticket sales. And then the biggest thing is, we're giving away free apartments. So Seth Oldham this year received a free two-year apartment at One Light, and we are already in talks this year, we have our teacher that's going to be in Two Light. So that will be in October of this year, and they will take over in December. But it's a really exciting partnership with them. Next thing was a relationship with the 15 and the Mahomes. We were one of 15 nonprofits in the Kansas City area that was selected to receive $15,000 from his foundation, so we were excited to go to his event, bring some students, the Paseo Choir thing, and we were the only school district that was asked to bring any type of entertainment for that event. So we were excited to showcase our kids and our talent, and we're hoping we see many more Super Bowls and many more checks from Mr. Mahomes in the future. And the last thing was our inaugural State of the Schools Leadership Breakfast. Every other school district in the city actually does a wonderful State of the Schools Breakfast, except for Kansas City Public Schools. So we were excited, under the direction of Dr. Vadel, to bring that to the city. We got rave reviews, people loved hearing all the good things that we're doing in our district, but then they also like to be challenged of how you can step up and also stand in the gap for our students. So we're going to do another one in May of 2018, or May of 2020. Forgive me, it's 7:30. So in May of 2020, and we're already selling tickets and inviting folks to come to that as well. So this is just kind of a quick snapshot of exciting pictures from our year, ranging from Summer Fest to Teacher of the Year to the Avid induction ceremony. It was a good year. 2019 was a phenomenal year for the foundation. Looking at 2020 goals, we really want to focus on marketing. We, as you can kind of tell, don't have a broad range of individual donors. We have a lot of excitement from foundations and local companies, but we want community stakeholders to be financially invested in this district as well. So we need to find a way to engage them, tell our story, tell the district's story, and then really invite them to give. Do some long-range financial planning. As you know, we are a partnership right now to cover my salary, and it would be great for the foundation to grow, to be able to fund not only me, but potentially have some other folks assist, which was always great, and that way we can grow and actually meet capacity. And then finally, of course, gear up for that Leadership Breakfast, that's May 28, 2020. So at this point, we will take any questions that you may have, or donations, if you would like to go to the website at kcpfoundation.org.
Dr. Jones, would you let me just ask my, I've got, we've got two colleagues here who also support the Education Foundation, and that's Rita Cortez and Nate Hogan. And I was wondering if either of you or both of you would like to make any comments about the Education Foundation?
Sure, yeah. I was going to have a question as well, so it's perfect. No, look, Nicole and team, Michaela, you know, leading the new board and the entire board are phenomenal, right? You guys are, first of all, you have one employee, right, who's having to do everything, right? Marketing, sales, relationship building, and management, administrative, you know, deal with people like me. I mean, it's quite a bit, right? And so, congratulations, I mean, the numbers speak for themselves.
Thank you.
Right, and so thank you for the hard work you guys are pouring into the foundation, but ultimately the kids, because they're the ones benefiting from it. So I noticed on slide five, under payroll deduction participation, so a little bit of a note, how, what percentage of the board is contributing? Maybe not through payroll deduction, but in general. You can take my full pay. Yeah. It's like your full pay.
I would, I would say...
No, you don't need to answer that. I would just encourage...
I was gonna...
I wouldn't just encourage us, whether it's $5 or $500 or whatever, we should be fully invested in the foundation as well, because the work that you're doing is meaningful, right? And so I would just encourage our colleagues to really just find a way to invest financially as well as your time whenever possible, so thanks again for the effort.
I will say a good chunk is doing so.
A good chunk.
A good chunk.
So we have...
But not 100%, yes, a good chunk.
Cortez, any comments?
I'm not going to flunk technology. This seems like a running gag, doesn't it? What I really admire about the work that you're doing and appreciate, Michaela, we see each other a lot in our professional lives. What you're doing with the foundation is, it's a great point of engagement for the corporate community, to learn about KCPS, to hear about avenues for engagement, and to do more than touch once.
Right.
Right, because that's what we're really good at in the corporate world. So thank you for that, and thank you for keeping people engaged. The new board is very exciting, and really reflects, I think, both the breadth and the depth of folks who care about KCPS.
Dr. Jones?
Thank you, thank you again for everything that you all are doing, and I'm just going to ask to please send the solicitation around again, some of us overlooked it. Not necessarily myself, but please send that out again. It's not for lack of desire.
Can do, can do.
Anyway, I feel like somebody was trying to call me out. But anyway, I also just wanted to point out between your presentation, as well as the one that we had before from Dr. Laurie, it's interesting that, you know, we have at least one person who inquires regularly about our commitment to serving the needs of our special education needs, and so between your presentation of detailing how much of your incoming funds have been directed to scaffolding for those students, and then the previous one about how much, you know, has been going to reading interventionists, I just, I hope that everyone listens and understands the district's commitment that is apparent for those needs. So thank you.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Just, I want to recognize you again, because I know, I guess it just didn't dawn on me, she's a person of one doing all of this, and this huge increase is, you are to be commended. You took my, you know, give us the, solicit us again for us here at the board, because I hope that next year, when you come in front of us, we're going to at least be the same as the cabinet participation. But also to make sure, so if individuals, because I know that was one of your areas, so if anybody is listening tonight and does want to know, so what do they do if they would like to donate to the Education Foundation?
You can go online at kcpfoundation.org. We have a link that you can directly give and make a note of where you want your funds to go. You can call me, email me, Skywrite me, Facebook me, all of the above. And honestly, the staff of Kansas City Public Schools is phenomenal, they all direct folks to me, so even if you find someone and just say, hey, can you put me in touch with Nicole Collier White? They're really wonderful at flagging me down, so thank you.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. I've watched this organization, this program grow significantly, and my thanks to the board members, some who've been around for quite a while, sitting in the back, some who are new arrivals. It takes community voices like your board to help spread the word about the importance and the value they get from giving to KCPS. So I know the importance of having a good board and having one that's highly engaged and believes in the mission, so thank you. I appreciate it. The next items of business are the regular business items. The board chair recognizes Dr. Mark Vadel to discuss item number one, 2020-2021 school year calendar.
Thank you. At this time, the administration is asking the board to accept the 2021 185-day work calendar for the Kansas City Public School System for this upcoming school year. We've worked with our union and came together to collaborate on what this calendar would look like, and that is a process that we undertake generally every two years. We know that this year, because of a statute, the district's in a position where we are not allowed to start until the 24th. However, it is important that I leave this caveat with every single one of you. There is concerns around that 24th start date, because we know that the charter schools, based on how the bill was written, they can start previous, as previous, two weeks earlier than us, and that is a concern for both St. Louis and Kansas City Public Schools. And we are looking to try to get an adjustment to that, but at this point, you know, we needed to make sure that we put a calendar out to our community, and if there are any changes, which I'm not certain will happen, that'd be a further conversation with our union, our board, and then also the community at large. But at this point, we are asking you to accept the proposed calendar for next year.
I want to open this up for any questions from my board colleague. The agenda, the calendar, I'm sorry, the calendar item. Hearing no questions, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve the proposed KCPS school year 2021 calendar. So moved?
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, the secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Mancier?
Yes.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Westerstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes. Thank you, the calendar is approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. Our next item is the, we're asking, the administration is asking the board to take action on the FY '20 Comprehensive Budget Amendment I, in the amount of $265,325,847. That's long, I'm glad I know how to do some math. So now, Ms. Quinley, we'll let you move forward with this component.
Very briefly, as we know from many of you, this is your real first budget amendment with us. So a little background, what we do normally is, we have what we call Budget Amendment I, that Dr. Vadel just introduced, that comes to you this time of the year. And then in order to make sure that we do not violate one of the primary statutes in the state of Missouri around budgeting, we come back to you in June. There's a specific law that says never ever can anything be spent over the budget originally, currently authorized by the Board of Directors, Board of Education. So in this first one, I'll take you through some slides, and then definitely want to hear your questions. What you see here in this first column that says operating, those are the incidental and teacher and capital projects funds. So I want you to keep that in mind as we go through. Some of the major changes that we're making in this, we talked earlier about we are not adjusting the budget for current property taxes, because it feels like we're on track for budget. But we do know that we are behind on trend for that delinquent line, so we are amending the budget backwards, reducing it by 1.5 million in revenues for delinquent taxes. Just going to hit some of the high notes here. Financial institution tax that you see there, and county stock insurance, those are based on actual collections, so we're just bringing the budget to what we know those revenues are going to be. Payment in lieu of taxes or pilots, we're reducing that budget by $855,000 based on this year's trends. We are coming off a couple of high years on those payments because of some settlements and some payouts of some of the big ones, so we're probably getting into a more steady but low annual payment on pilots, is what it looks like we're experiencing. And then the basic foundation formula, I wanted to draw your attention to this. You will recall that in December, November and December, maybe December and January, we brought you MOUs with our charter schools to meet that shortfall in the DESI available state resources for KCPS, to fund the higher per pupil local resources to our charter schools. This is a very conservative budget adjustment that we're making at this point to increase that negative revenue. We've talked about, we'd already budgeted for it, there was already a negative line of revenue. If you flip back to your treasurer's report, you'll see that there. This is increasing that negative line very conservatively, based on the September memberships. But again, to make sure that we have adequate contra-revenue, since it's a negative revenue on that line, when we go to make those payments to our charter schools in March, and then again in July, we're increasing it. And the reason that I say it's conservative is that that September membership count came in very high for total students in the Kansas City system. So when we looked at the number of kids counted during that count window, that 10-day count window at charter schools and KCPS, it looked like as a system we were up about 800 children. Highly unusual, highly unlikely. Rule of reasonable numbers and historical trend tell us that's not probable. However, also during that 10-day window of counting in September, it is probable, the kids are still moving, they're trying to find their home, and it could be that we've counted a student and a charter, or maybe two during that 10-day window, if that family's working to see where their final home's going to be this year. So that 800-student increase could be 200 kids counted 2.4 times or something like that. So the January membership figures that we're waiting on now are going to give us a little better feel for what that's actually going to be this year. So again, I don't think we're going to need this additional negative revenue in this line, but we're putting it there just in case, because we certainly don't want to slow the process of making payments to charters as we promised under those MOUs. Other things on this line, as you look at it, you look at that middle column, Grants. The bulk of this money is in grants and donations, this amendment, and those are, when you look down to the, next to bottom, you see 4.4 million for Perkins Special Education, Title I, Title II. Most of those are...
Most of those are bringing forward unused prior-year carryovers into this year after final allocations were received, and we're starting to put those monies to use in this year. So those are changes to revenue. Then when we look at the expenditures, you'll see in the Grants column that, again, that's where the bulk of it is, because as those revenues become available in the grants, then they're able to spend them. Where it says net increase this amendment, zero, it should be that same 7.5 million in revenues. So basically, we're adding the revenue and we're adding the expenditure, so it's a net zero change to the budget. We have taken up the operating expenditures, $490,000, as compared to a $2.9 million increase in revenues, net increase in revenues, and that is going to result in additional resources that go into reserves, if all revenues are actually realized as budgeted. So when we look at the summary page, as Dr. Vadel said, brings us to a total budget of revenue of $267 million and expenditures of $265 million. When you look at the far-right column where it says variance or increase down at the very bottom, you see that it does budget to increase fund balance by $1.4 million, which is a really nice range against a $200 million budget. Questions?
Does the board have any questions about this? Hearing no questions. Thank you, Ms. Quinley. It would be in order to receive a motion to approve the, move the approval of the recommendation of the superintendent to approve Budget Amendment I to the FY 2020 Comprehensive Budget in the amount of $265,325,847.
So moved?
Is there...
Second it.
Are there any questions or debate? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item that the administration's requesting the board to take action on is our educational-based services. This is our First Amendment, and this is for our special ed services, in particular outsourcing services, in the amount of $1.3 million.
Are there any questions from the board regarding this EBS First Amendment? Hearing none, it would be in order to receive a motion to move the approval of the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the First Amendment to the contract with educational-based services. The First Amendment increases the contract amount for FY 1920 from $2,850,000 to $3,385,000, an increase of $1.3 million.
Second.
Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, the secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you. The contract with educational-based services is approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The final item is the First Amendment of Belfonte Contract in the amount of $195,000. This is the contract that we have to supply us with milk, dairy, juice products, ice cream, I mean, it's the ice cream company, but this amendment will be effective moving through July 1, through, July 1, 19 through June 30 of 2020, which will close out this school year, school year's budget, sorry.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this? It would be in order to have a motion to authorize the First Amendment of the Belfonte Ice Cream Company contract for the supply and delivery of milk, dairy, and juice products.
So moved?
Second.
It is moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will respond yes, those opposed, no.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you. The Belfonte Ice Cream Company contract is approved. The next item on the agenda are the consent items. Items 1 through 32 would be in order to receive a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Are there any, is there any debate on the consent items? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you. Before we conclude this evening's meeting, I think there was one final announcement from our Communications and Community Engagement Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to remind the public that we will have our next on-the-road board meeting, which will be at Truist Elementary on March 11. And we can, we hope to see you there. We will have a reception starting at 6:00 PM and then followed by the board meeting. So we hope to see you there. The address is 1215 East 59th Street, and there will be childcare, so we hope to see you out.
Thank you for that. And so with this, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. The board colleagues, we'll have a short return for short board chair open.